Okay, good morning everyone. Welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for today, March 4th, 2014. For the record, it is 9:10 a.m. Madam Clerk, if you can continue with the roll call.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Present.
Vice Chair Mike?
Present.
Commissioner Barone?
Present.
Commissioner Barone?
Present. And for the record, as you all know, election day today, so Commissioner Barone will not be present with us. We'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Anita Padilla to lead us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. And so for the record, we, as you all know, Commissioner Blankenhorn is in Washington, DC, as is our county manager, Mr. Steve Archuleta. They are joining us via the telephone conference. And so hopefully, everything is going well in Washington, DC. Tom and Steve, can you hear us?
Yes, it is. I can hear you, and it's been a good conference. Glad that Steve could make it, and sorry you couldn't make it, Chairman, but we'll hold down the fort.
Okay. I want to say it's an Obama conspiracy. They don't want me there.[97.22][97.22](Laughter) But I won't go that far. Okay, we'll move on then to the approval of the agenda. There are three items in the agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion for acceptance of the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to amend the agenda, just to add something quick on the Vietnam veterans.
Okay, and we can include that under...
Well, we could put that under...
Item C?
Under item C, correct.
Department Matters?
Yeah, 7C.
Is that appropriate, Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, that would be fine. As I understand it, it's just an informational matter.
Okay. Okay, is there any other changes to the agenda as presented? If not, a motion? Motion made? Okay. Second? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Commissioner Jeff?
Yes.
Chairman Matt?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item 6. This is the beginning of the public hearing with discussion. Oh, okay, citizens' concerns, sorry about that. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Okay, go ahead and come forward.
Chair?
Yeah, present your... State your name for the record.
I'm Cynthia Arvidson. I'm the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity here in Taos. And just wanted to bring something to your attention that you may know about. I spoke at the town council meeting. There's a house that's co-owned by the county and the town in the Chumisa Verde subdivision. We're building right next to it, our 29th House for Habitat for Low-Income Housing, and that is used for storage, the house that's co-owned. And it's on Lamente de Coyote. And we would love... You know, we had heard at some point that it was talk that somehow the house was going to be, I don't know what the correct term is, I hate to say "given," but somehow Habitat would acquire that and be able to put a low-income family in there. So it was just wanting to bring it to the attention of the commissioners and just see if there's something that we can do, that we can help make that happen and get another family in there instead of using it for storage. We've got visiting work groups that... There's one here today from Lancomen College, and they look in the windows, and they're like, "Why is there computers in there? Why isn't there a family in there?" And we are having a family orientation this month, and we sure would love to get another family in there.
Okay, and I know that this particular item has come up for unofficial discussion amongst the county commission, and so we look forward. We thank you for bringing that up to our attention. And I believe Mrs. Padilla would like to share a few words with regards to that particular house.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this house was... It's actually not a co-owned building. The property was donated by previous mayor Bobby Duran for a youth build project, and that was one of the reasons we received federal monies from HUD for our youth build program was to build houses and to have the youth involved. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you were very involved in youth build at a time. And what happened with this project was, we got the house built, the town was not able to give us a warranty deed. That was the time that the Chumisa Verde subdivision was under question for illegal subdivision policy. So we are now trying to backtrack to see if we can't get that. There is a deed that has already been drafted to Taos County, but we're trying to backtrack through the files. The director that left the program, we do not know where the files are, so we're trying to get that letter from Bobby Duran showing that the property actually belongs to Taos County. So it's not a co-owned kind of partnership.
Right. And as I understand it, the property, the land, which is about a quarter of an acre or so, it's a small city lot, was... The intention was to donate it to the youth build program, which at the time worked with Habitat for Humanity. And so the property is, in fact, just to clear the record, owned by the town of Taos at this moment, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay. And so what would be the next step, Mr. Malone, to make sure that this is settled?
Mr. Chairman, we would have to get the cooperation of the town and issue a deed. And that's what Anita's working on.
Okay. And so the final results of this project, of this home, I believe it is completed in its entirety, is that it would be sold to a family that would qualify or fit into those qualifications for Habitat for Humanity. That was the understanding way back then. It was built by members of the youth build group many years ago. And so I don't know as to what the state of the house is at this point, you know, if it's in good condition or if it's rundown. And I do have Mr. Mark Flores, who's with Taos County, that can testify to its condition. Mr.?
Chairman, members of the commission, the house is actually in a pretty good state. The roof is sound. We've had a couple issues with vandalism, the pass with cars, the broken windows, those have been replaced. Everything is sound and in the condition that it was left. It's currently used for storage right now. We have some old computers that are being... The hard drives are being erased and so forth, and you know, we have some lumber in there. But the house is in a fairly good state.
Okay. And do you know as to what the size of it is, or any of that?
No, I don't know how the exact square footage, but I could get that back to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, so there you have it, Cynthia. If you, you know, keep on top of it with us, we certainly appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? And going back to the youth build house, Mr. Malone, I know you have a lot on your plate, but if it's something that we can follow up in the very future?
I will. I'll work with Anita, and as I said, the key is getting a deed from the town.
And then how would we dispose of it? How do we put it back on the market? Or do we... How do we work with Habitat to make sure that the sale of it is finally completed?
Well, there are a number of different options. If we did it directly, even if we did it with Habitat, we'd probably have to do a economic development project agreement, but those are all doable.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, any questions, Commissioner Blankenhorn, or commissioners on this end? No? Any other questions from any of the staff? If not, we'll move on then to the public hearing part of today's meeting. Just for the record, it is 9:20. We'll go ahead and start that public hearing at this point. And Ms. Padilla, if you can come forward?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Commissioner Blankenhorn, I am here to present three viable projects for the CDBG application, 2014. My public meetings were held in Arroyo Seco on August 15th, 2013, Peñasco Community Center, August 21st, 2013, Juanai Agricultural Center, January 22nd, 2014, and today, March 4th, in the Taos County Commission chambers. My previous CDBG project was District 4 Road Improvement Project, which encompassed Rio Chiquito Road in Peñasco, La Plaza Road in Chamisal. Out of the $440,000, $434,194 was expended. My ICIP priorities, number one was Camino del Medio, number two was the Pilar Bridge, number three, Wymer Road, number four, Abregadero Road, and number five, Millicent Rogers Road. The reason I give you the top five priorities is that also plays a big impact on the CDBG projects. The three CDBG projects that I am presenting, Camino del Medio, Millicent Rogers Road, and Abregadero Road. Camino del Medio, out of a possible 100 points, receives 81. It would be to overlay existing with a 3-inch hot mix asphalt, 2.5 miles. Millicent Rogers Road... Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's not a possible 100, because Millicent Rogers Road received 115 points, and Abregadero Road received a total of 97 points. So at this time, I would like a project to be able to present to the CDBG council.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Padilla, how do you rate the points that they got?
The points are rated... A lot of it has to do with organizational background, like the people that apply for the grant, administer the grant, and close out the grant. It also has to do with past funding. If it was spent in a timely manner, if we were able to spend at least 95% of the funds, then it goes into your cost-benefit, the number of people that are going to benefit in that community, and how many of them are low to moderate income. All of that has impact on the actual overall project scoring. And that is how the people, the employees at DFA, Local Government Division, rank and review the projects. So we tried to implement that also when we start to pick our projects.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, commissioners, this, when Commissioner Hanami was here and Commissioner Chavez, we had all agreed that we would take turns on the CDBG grant. So this year would be my turn, and the reason I'm bringing that up is I... Abregadero Road in my district is in dear need of taking care of. It's in real bad shape. Thanks to Rick Chavez and his staff, we were able to do half a mile with the double penetration. And I think I could finish this road off before I get out of office by finishing it up with a triple penetration, and that would last for the remain... I mean, that would really take care of this road. And we do, you know, Anita just touched on low to moderate, and there is a lot of traffic in the area. So, you know, we did get, according to Anita, 97 points on that one. So that looks like it's other than Millicent. And this one, I asked commissioners that if you support me on this. I think it's something that could be done for my constituents up north. That's been probably one of the worst roads that we have up there. I better not say that, because all of them are bad. But this being one of them that we could take care of, and with the CDBG grant, this would be finished off completely with a triple penetration on that. So I ask Chairman, commissioners, for your support on this, because we did touch bases last time, and here's Commissioner Duran to vouch on that, that we were going to take turns with our CDBG grant. And it being my turn this time around, I'd appreciate the support. And thank you for all you've done, Anita and Rick Chavez also.
How many residents live on Abregadero Road?
Mr. Chairman, we've got people that live off to the right and left of Abregadero Road, and that's about 1.89 miles. And then we've got folks also that live on Lower Buena Vista Road and Upper Buena Vista Road. So that's quite... There's quite a bit. I don't have a total of residents, but it does have the people that use Upper Buena Vista, Lower Buena Vista, and Abregadero Road. That it's highly populated as far as traffic.
Is it a farm road type of?
It is. We, in fact, here in the last, what Anita would just say, maybe the last three years, we have a farm out there that produced a lot of produce for the people there. So that place is highly traveled, and we've got people there that live on that side. It's really dusty for those folks, and Anita's got something to add to that.
Mr. Chairman, when we're looking at these projects also, like I did for the District 5 and for Upper Ranchitos, you'd only want to keep the main, the specific road in mind. You want to keep all the neighboring roads that feed into that road. I was able to pull, you know, some stats for population there, and I show 1,920 people that live in Cerro. And I believe at some point in time during the week, all 1,920 people use that road. It's not just a road to get in and out of households, it's another bypass through the little community. So it is a viable project.
A school... Excuse me, Chairman. A school bus runs through there also?
Yes, sir, it does.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. You know, also, you know, I support Commissioner Sanchez because, you know, that was a true fact of what he said. But with Camino del Medio, is it true that the town has not completed their last year CDBG grant?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, as of my last conversation with the project manager on their CDBG project, they have not completed their project.
So this coming year for the funding, if they haven't completed it, they will not get no funding, right?
The mandatory workshop is held next week in Albuquerque. If you do not go to the workshop, you cannot submit an application. All applications, I believe, the tentative timeline is the end of May. So if they have not completed their project by the end of May, they cannot look for further funds from CDBG until that project is completed.
Because at our last meeting, I think the mayor was here, and he stated that they wanted to join forces, you know what I mean? But I look at it, the county's got to look out for the county, because I don't know who's going to win today as mayor, you know? And the thing about it is that one in particular wins, you know, they're going to try to annex this part, you know what I mean? After the county puts their investments into this road, and then they annex, you know, that ain't too good for the county, you know what I mean?
Correct. Also, when they're ranking and reviewing, they look at leveraging. And I do know that there has already been funds spent on Commissioner Sanchez's road. In speaking with Director Rick Chavez from the Public Works, it's going to be kind of hard to find the last time any funds were put on Camino del Medio. So there might be some points lost there because we can't prove leveraging. In the case of Commissioner Sanchez's road, I mean, that was just recently, and we would be able to put that onto the actual application.
And also, Mr. Chairman, you know, I look at it this way, that, you know, if there's a change in the town, I think things will work out better for the town and the county. So the way I look at it is, Chairman, you'll still be here for two more years. Commissioner Blankenhorn will also be here for two more years. If there's a change as a mayor, you know what I mean? Then I can see investing in Camino del Medio, you know what I mean? Because, you know, people will still be here, and I know it's needed out there too, you know what I mean? But I look at it, if one person in particular wins, you know, that's what's going to happen, it's going to get annexed, and it just did the town a favor, you know? That's the way I look.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Sanchez.
Chairman, commissioners, also, may I add, this road, Abregadero Road, that leads to the airport in Buena Vista. So we get a lot of traffic through there. Also, may I add now, is that Rio Grande del Norte, it's in that vicinity. So that's another plus, you know, to fixing that road, so we can get people to come out here, because they come in from Colorado, and they can come in through Buena Vista Road and come down Abregadero and go down to the Rio Grande Monument that we have now. So that's why I ask for your support, commissioners.
What would be the total amount of monies available?
Mr. Chairman, we would ask for the $500,000, which is the full amount of the grant. Taos County is obligated to match it with 10%, so that's $50,000. So the total amount of the project would be $550,000.
Okay, and that $50,000 is in our budget, Steve?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, yes, that's something that we would have available. I also wanted to let the commission chamber know, commissioners, know that during the capital outlay process, the governor hasn't signed it yet, or I'm not aware if the governor has signed it. We did get $130,000 for Camino del Medio, and the town got $180,000 for Camino del Medio. So if the commission chose to go with Abregadero Road, then that money could be used for some planning design this year on Camino del Medio, if that's how the commission chooses to go forward with.
Okay. So we have almost $310,000 or $20,000 for Camino del Medio at this point. And I guess the concern that I have is making sure that we don't, if we were to fund Camino del Medio, that we don't do just a blacktop overlay over it. I, in my opinion, it's a project that's an interconnector with a lot of other county roads, including State Road 240, with the potential to connect up to, in the future, Tom Holder Road, crossover Tom Holder Road onto the UNM area. And so we, in my opinion, just can't throw money at it just to pave it, just for the sake of paving it. It's got to be properly planned and approved, and make sure that the residents in that area are happy with it. And so that is kind of my thought with it. Commissioner Blankenhorn, anything from your end?
What's the total cost to complete Abregadero?
Commissioner Sanchez, I believe, has an answer.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Commissioner Blankenhorn, I was... That's going to ask Rick Chavez that. He's in attendance.
Okay.
If I could get him up here. He's got some numbers for me, and I think we could probably finish it off with less than $500,000, is what I'm gathering.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, to correct Commissioner Sanchez, we will not do a triple penetration. That's no such thing. We would do an overlay over the remainder of the project that hasn't been double penetrated. So we could spend all of the money available through CDBG on overlay.
And they would get it done.
Final product.
And Mr. Chavez, any thought on how many residents? The fact that it serves the National Monument is a good point for me, but any idea how many residents use it on a daily basis?
Mr. Chairman, as Anita said, you know, it's likely a lot of the people use it there. It's kind of like a bypass for in Cerro, because it's a straight shot. It's 1.9 miles if you're going north, or if you're coming from the north to the south or into the monument. So my sense is that it's got pretty good volumes in there.
Okay. Commissioner Blankenhorn, did you have a question?
I didn't get the total, the estimated total for completion.
On Abregadero? Abregadero Road, where the response was from Mr. Rick Chavez that we would get about half a million dollars, and that more than likely it could all be used on this particular road. It serves as a bypass to the Cerro area, and it also connects with the National Monument area.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Blankenhorn?
No.
Okay. Mr. Steve, I was wondering if Commissioner Barone was going to partake in this conversation today or not?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, it was my understanding he was going to be there for a short period of time, but apparently, I think Commissioner Duran called him, and the statement was that he was not going to be attending.
Okay.
So I don't know if Commissioner has a better update than I do.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. What is the deadline for making this decision?
Anita, what is the deadline for making the decision?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is why I kind of rushed this for today, because I thought we were going to have a full meeting. We kind of need to make the decision today, because I do have the workshop next week. CDBG application undertakes a lot of paperwork. I have to do an environmental, I have to do my low to moderate income, and I'd like to do... And then we need to have something from our engineer, who is Mr. Chavez, before we put the application in. So as soon as we have the application workshop, which is next week, I only have about eight weeks to put the application together.
Okay. Now, as far as the points earned on each project, there's three projects. Camino del Medio was 81. Did you state 81 points for Camino del Medio?
Yes, sir.
Millicent Rogers was?
115.
115.
115?
Yes.
And then Abregadero Road?
Was 97.
97.
That would change a little bit, though, because of the leveraging, the money we've already spent on Commissioner Sanchez's road. And I would like to say, County Manager Steve Archuleta brought up a really good point, and as you did. On Camino del Medio, we want a complete plan put in place before we go for the CDBG funds. When we're doing Commissioner Sanchez's road, we have an engineer on staff who is able to give those specs for the CDBG application, so we don't actually have to go out of house to do that. On the other project, we will have to go out, you know, to do that.
Okay, and then with regards to CDBG funding, I know that their choice of funding projects changes from one year to the next. Last year, I believe there was a combination of water projects, sewer projects. This year, is it definitely roads, or are they looking at funding other types of projects?
It's going to be infrastructure again this year. There were some roads that were funded last year. I believe you just have to make sure they know the need of the community, but they did fund some road projects last year. I don't believe the thinking has changed at the council level. I believe it's going to be infrastructure with, of course, an emphasis on water and wastewater, which Taos County at this time does not have their hands in, so...
Are there other entities from Taos County that are applying for this type of funding?
Mr. Chairman, I do not know that answer.
Okay, El Valle de los Rancho's Water and Sewer, you don't?
I have no idea.
Okay, and no collaboration takes place with the other entities?
No.
Okay. And then as far as if the funding is granted, when does it come in, and how much time do you have to expend it?
Local Government Division has started pushing back their application process. Usually by this time, our application is already in, and we're going to hearings. As you remember, we did on the Old County Courthouse. I believe the tentative date, again, will be... Application will be submitted, the deadline will be the end of May. They'll probably do rank and review some, a month after that, and with grant agreements being sent out to the communities in probably August.
Okay. And so on another type of project that we had at one point or another asked for CDBG funding, it's the Old Courthouse. Are the same funds available for the Old Courthouse?
Mr. Chairman, no, they are not. At this time, the council does not believe that cultural facilities have a big impact or a need by the specific communities.
Okay. And Steve, on your end, as far as the meetings with our congressional delegations are concerned today, I'm wondering that, because this road does lead to the National Monument area, if there were, in fact, other monies available that we could tap into from the federal government side to be able to help in making sure that this road would... Abregadero would be completed if, in fact, it was completed. road would, Abregadero would be completed if in fact the, the Commission so desires to do so today?
Mr. Chairman, we can, Commissioners, we can definitely ask that question. It is on our list of priorities and it is on the letterhead that we're actually giving our congressional delegation. And so until I get in there at 5:30 this afternoon, I'll, you know, ask more specific questions as to if that's gonna be a possibility. We also have the road that's in Commissioner Blankenhorn's district for the National Monument. So if we're able to finish Abregadero Road from the north side, then maybe we could get something in the middle. I forgot what the name of the road is. I'm not sure if it's Jack Rapplet Road or what, what that name of that road is.
Commissioner Blankenhorn, are, are you two in the same room or?
No, we're not.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Blankenhorn, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay, what's your thoughts on that?
I, I don't have quite enough information on, to make this decision today. I mean, you know, I followed the, the strain of the conversation there with the access to the National Monument and we will definitely have those discussions today and tomorrow with our congressional delegation. But it's, this is a big decision, the CDBG funding, and I just need to get some more information before I'm able to make a decision to choose a road. And so my preference is to make this decision at the next meeting.
And staff is, is nodding at me and they're saying?
No, I'm going like this.
They're, they're saying no, that it, it can't happen, Commissioner Blankenhorn, that the decision has to be made today. Both Herbert Valdez and Anita are, are indicating that. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner, I, I agree with Anita. I think we need to move forward with this. And then also Commissioner Blankenhorn, you know, I, like I said earlier, this was my turn for the CDBG grant. Whatever happens after I'm gone, I just wanna finish this road before I get out of office. So I appreciate you supporting me on this, Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Did, did you hear that, Commissioner Blankenhorn?
I did.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Duda?
Legislative grants, Mr. Archuleta, by when will we know if we got that money for Camino del Medio?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Duda, the Governor has 20 days from the end of the session to actually sign that. So I think she's got about 10 days left is my understanding before she either is gonna have to sign it or be to it.
And let me ask this question with the 310 between the town and the county, would that be enough money for plan and design?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm, I don't think that's actually enough money. Mr. Chavez is in the room. He actually has gone over the scoping report. We got the scoping report from the town to take a look at it. And I think that if we look at, you know, the scoping report that the town gave us was really more of the infrastructure within the town limits. You know, if we look at actually acquiring land, strengthening out the road and taking it out to 64, then I think that we're actually gonna need more money and manpower time and design for acquisition of land and, and different things like that. But, you know, with the 180 from the town, the 130 from the county, it's a good start in that process, but we'll probably need more plan and design money just to, to do it right and, and to take it all the way where the Commission's wanting to go with this.
Because according to what staff is saying, you know, if we've already put in some money into this road, we have a better chance of getting the CDBG money for Camino del Medio, you know? And I don't have no problem, but you know, it's like staff says, you know, for next year, I think Camino del Medio would be the ideal, ideal route since we, you know, if we do put the 310,000 in there.
And Anita, is the focus going to be for next year on, on roads again? Do you know? It changes periodically?
Mr. Chairman, we usually get the vibe from CDBG Council when we go for our hearings. Last year, we really thought it was gonna be on cultural facilities. That's what, that's what conversations had been from Department of Finance. And then when we got to the hearing, it was a whole different story. So we really don't know until we get through the hearing portions.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Blankenhorn.
So how do we know we're going to be able to finish a project if we don't have an estimate, a good, firm estimate on the completion? And obviously, that's important because if you don't finish your CDBG project, then you lose out, just as we lost out last year. And, you know, I, I don't know, obviously, I wasn't here for any deals that were made between Commissioners about CDBG funding. Like who's, who was supposed to get the old courthouse? What was, what was that Commissioner Barone's turn? I, I don't know. I, I, I hate to make the decision based on one of those deals because frankly, those, those deals are not really appropriate for decision-making on CDBG. And Commissioner Sanchez, don't get me wrong, you know, I, I know Abregadero is important. All, all three of the roads are, are very important and, and we have a big job ahead of us trying to, to get all of them completed. So, but my, my, my question was, are we confident that this grant will be able to be completed within a year if we choose Abregadero?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, this project actually would have a better chance of being completed within the year because it is not located in any flood zones. If you're located in a floodplain, then there's six more weeks of publication that has to happen before you can get any of your money. So out of the two projects, Camino del Medio and Abregadero, this is an easier project that, I mean, there's a better chance of finishing it within the year.
Commissioner Blankenhorn, any other questions?
No, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Blankenhorn, I did talk to Rick Chavez and he said it can be completed, so.
Mr. Chavez, do you wanna speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, once Anita gets done with what she needs to do and once the money's available and we go through the bidding process, which may take a month or so, that, that project could be done in two days. And, and I recommend, the minimum I recommend to the Commission always is three inches of hot mix pavement. If we have to go three and a half, four inches, we could spend 500,000 on that road.
Okay, I, I guess one of the questions that I have, I'm not familiar with the road. And I'm, I'm wondering if there would be staff available today to, to show it at least to me. I know Commissioner Sanchez is very familiar with it. And I've, I haven't been on Millicent Rogers Road myself either in, in ages. I, I just don't travel through it. So Anita, would there be some staff available today to be able to do that and then we could come back even later on this afternoon and, and make a final determination? Is that something that you all would consider? Steve, what are your thoughts on that? Commissioner Sanchez, go ahead.
Chairman, Commissioners, I had the guys blade the, the road here the other day, Abregadero. Three days later, it's in the same predicament that it was three days before. So it's, it's, it's really bad and I think Rick can vouch for that.
Commissioner, Virgil?
Washboard effect on that road.
Mr. Chairman?
Go, go ahead.
If I may, I know Mr. Blankenhorn has some reservations. It would, it would be okay with me if, if you guys wanna talk about it and we come back next Tuesday morning, maybe for a special meeting, and you could advise me at that time. That would give him time also to, to view the road and it would give the rest of the Commission time. Because when, when you give me the direction, I wanna be sure that this is, you know, the, the way we wanna go.
Okay. I, I just feel a lot more comfortable in, in making the decision if we go look at it. I understand the argument from staff in that it would take a lot more time to dedicate monies to something that require, that isn't a flood, floodplain zone versus something like Abregadero that isn't. And it could be done a lot quicker. I like the fact that it serves the, the National Monument area as well. That's of benefit to the, both the local public as well as our tourism industry. That's a good point for me. But I would feel a lot more comfortable by being able to, to look at these roads before I, I make my decision today as well.
Also, Mr. Chairman, in, in viewing the roads, I would also like you to keep in mind the planning and design that have to go into each one of these roads. Again, Camino del Medio certainly is gonna take a professional engineer and it'll probably take them, you know, quite a bit of time. Whereas Abregadero Road, you know, it can be done in-house with, with current staff.
Okay.
At least keep that in mind.
It would also extend the project?
Correct.
We could do more?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Archuleta, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to just double check with Bob if we would just continue the meeting then, if you guys choose to come back tomorrow morning and, talk about this because I'm just concerned about the open meetings acting on the notice. So I think we would just have to continue the meeting till tomorrow?
I, I don't know if it's tomorrow or next Tuesday, but whatever the time is, yes, we can continue that item to a specific time and place. As long as we announce a specific time and place, then the open meetings requirements are met. And of course, it would be up to the Commission as to whether to do it later this afternoon or tomorrow or, or a week from today. I think Anita had suggested the possibility of a week from today, but whatever the Commission's pleasure is, we can do that.
I know that I have a meeting tomorrow in the morning with the NPRPO Board as well, which is the Highway Department involvement. And so I wouldn't tomorrow in the morning, but in the afternoon, I would be open to the idea of being able to continue the meeting till tomorrow afternoon sometime or even latter part of this week would be fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, if, if we were able to continue it to next Tuesday, then of course, I could be in attendance and I could take a tour myself and, and of course, Commissioner Barone also. It's a big decision. I, I would like to be able to make the decision with all of us present and discussing it and with all of us having seen the, the roads.
Mr. Chairman, and that is certainly doable on my side. I do not leave for the workshop until Tuesday afternoon.
Okay. Is it possible to meet on Thursday or, or Friday, Commissioner Blankenhorn, Steve? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just to calculate this in your thinking, I have a root canal on Thursday.
Okay, root canal on Thursday. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a-
Also, we're traveling back on, on Thursday, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So maybe Friday, the earliest. I, I guess I'm just thinking in terms of wanting to give our staff a little, few more days and just a few hours on, on making sure that this application process is, is completed correctly.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think next Tuesday would be fine. It's my understanding staff's going to an application training on next week.
Okay.
And so they'll be, they'll be doing the actual training for the application, get all the paperwork and everything they need. And then we have approximately, I think, six weeks after that to get the application and all the, all the documents in. So if next Tuesday sounds good with everybody, I think that's a good time to, to get everything done. We'll make sure we have lead board there and everybody.
Can we also have a, a field trip on that same day?
You're asking if we can have a?
A field trip to, to be able to go to these roads on, on Tuesday and then come back and, and make the decision?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's up to the Commission. Staff will plan whatever the Commission asks us to do, so.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Very good. Any other discussion, Anita, from, from your end?
No, sir. I will just wait for direction.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Sanchez?
Then we're looking at Tuesday. Is that next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm fine with that because Friday I'm, I've got a commitment.
Okay. And so this being a, a public hearing, then I need to also ask for public input, correct? Staff? Anita? Okay. So at this time, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on, on behalf of the CDBG funding? Seeing that there aren't any individuals, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for CDBG. Well, actually, we'll need to make a decision, Mr. Malone, actually to table or continue the hearing until?
The, the correct phrase would be continue. And so there would be necessary for there to be a motion to continue it to, I assume, 9:00 AM on next Tuesday, whatever that date. Does somebody have a calendar quick handy?
Tuesday, the, what day is it, Commissioner? 11th of March. Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
No.
Motion made by Commissioner Duda. I will go ahead and second. Any other remarks or comments? If not, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman Ramar?
Yes. Okay. We'll move on then to Item 7. This is Department Matters Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. We have Item A, Request for Out-of-State Travel and Actual Reimbursement for Mr. Alan Sanchez, Fire Chief, Office of Emergency Management Director. Mr. Sanchez, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm up here in front of you today to get permission and request for reimbursement for out-of-state travel. The conference I'm going to is the International Wireless and Communication Expo. In the package, there's also a course outlining of some of the classes I was gonna intending and kind of taking the shotgun approach. Some of the classes are more towards Office of Emergency Management. Some of them are towards Fire Department Communications. And then some of them are also with the 911 Center. There's a course on the next generation of 911 regarding the use of 911 text. It's also a great place to see a lot of the new products that are coming out. So that's the, the request and then kind of a brief synopsis of the, the conference.
And the conference is where?
It's in Las Vegas, Nevada.
And do we have an estimated expense?
Estimated expense for the total, total course, hotel, airfare, and everything included is just over $2,000, $2,070.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I got a question.
Okay, Mr. Sanchez?
So you'll be attending this by yourself?
Yes.
Okay. And you know, that's good that we're having trainings. It's, it's all good. I'm all for it, for our staff and county. And then you'll come back and?
I will share the information, whatever I, I get from this. This is really the only out-of-state travel. I do everything else. I try and do within the, the state as far as what are our training opportunities have come up or briefings that, that need to take place. So like now in March and April, there is a lot of wildland briefings that are starting up. So this is the one thing that I try and, and get from the communication side.
Okay.
And this, this didn't, I don't know if I can touch on it. Maybe, I need to talk to you after, after our meeting, Mr. Sanchez, on something else?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners?
No move?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Chairman Ramar?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to Item 7B, Presentation, Approval of the DWI Distribution Grant Application Resolution 2014-10. Mr. Herbert Valdez?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'm here to present the grant application for fiscal year 15, for the Grand Ten Distribution. The amount of the grant that I'm applying for is 57,038.94. And the amount for the distribution is 2048,217.91 for a total of 305,256.65. And this is gonna be to pay staff and for the daily operational costs.
And that is for what period of time, Mr. Valdez?
It'll be from July 1st of 2014 till June 30th of 2015.
So one, one fiscal year?
One fiscal year.
Okay. And this funding mechanism was not at all affected in this last legislative session?
It was kind of affected because they took away about- It was kind of affected, because they took away about half a million dollars to give to the drug court programs.
I see, and as far as match funding from the county?
We use Amy Pacheco as the in-kind from the county, for both grant and distribution.
And that's in the budget already?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments from Steve, our county manager, Commissioners? Mr. Sanchez?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Secretary? Yes.
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 Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Herbert, we'll move on to Item 7C then, this is a discussion for, with regards to Veterans Matters, Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman Commissioners, Audience, I got this flyer from Jerry Martinez out of Santa Fe, this is for the Vietnam Veterans, the Wall at Hills, it's a traveling Vietnam Veterans Memorial that's coming to Santa Fe, March 20th through the 24th, the Vietnam Veterans of America, Northern New Mexico Chapter 996, has been asked to host the Wall at Hills, a half-scale replica of the Vietnam Wall in Washington DC. Arriving in Santa Fe, New Mexico, on March 18th, 2014, this exhibit will be on display from March 20th through the 24th at the city's Fort Marcy Ballpark, just north on the old Taos Highway right on Morales Road, and there is no charge for admission, so I would like for all veterans to support this, and I'd like to thank Jerry Martinez for sending me this information, and I'd like, I wanted to put this on our, on the, for our veterans in Taos County.
Very good.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, any other questions or comments from anyone with regards to this matter? If not, I will at this time entertain a motion for adjournment?
Or continuation.
Or, well, we did continue the work study on the CDBG, but to close this part of the meeting, I do need a motion, Commissioner.
Take it.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blankenhorn? Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, Steve, and thank you, Commissioner Blankenhorn.